Okay, we're live now.
Okay.
I'll call an order to the meeting of the Honeyberg Common Council. The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation in our God and with all the liberty and justice for all.
Great. Father God, thank you for the commitment of these elected officials and for the servants that we have as employees of the city. I ask that we go in this meeting tonight that you might guide our hearts and make sure that what we do today is for the benefit of all citizens of Honeyberg. With these things, we ask of your sons.
Amen.
Call for approval of the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
All second. First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the claims docket. Make a motion to approve the claims. Second?
All second.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I don't have anything new today. I guess actually maybe we could introduce our guest rather than doing it at the end. We do have somebody that just found out this afternoon that you were in town and if you want to come forward and kind of introduce yourself. That way you don't have to stay for all the rest of our meeting and that would get you on your way ashore.
My name is Totori Marion and I'm a public affairs specialist with the Small Business-
Could you walk the podium too so we get it on speaker here? Thank you.
I'm Totori Marion. I'm a public affairs specialist with the Small Business Administration. We are in the area of Davies Counties and all of its contiguous counties, which includes DuBois. And we are here offering low interest federal loans to the community for the storms that happened June 28th through July 2nd. These loans are 30-year fixed. They're 12 months, no interest. And for homeowners, their interest rates as low as 2.8% and for business owners as low as 4.0%. Does anybody have any questions?
Now, you're set up in Jasper, right? Do you have a permanent office or?
A hotel room.
Okay.
But we do have a disaster loan outreach center in Odin, Illinois. And you can go there to sign up or you can go to our website, sba.gov/disaster.
If you have any materials, we can share that on our website. We have your information here.
I can send you an email with the fact sheet and the press release.
That'd be great.
Is that in Odin, Indiana or?
Indiana.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I'm assuming that. But how do people find out about it? The website is the best way to get started or?
The website. I'll be at different events in the counties. I'm looking for events to attend, board meetings, chamber lunches, festivals, different things like that to get the word out. But I'm counting on you to help spread the word to your community.
So kind of quickly, what was the process of doing this? Do they follow up and take pictures of damage and stuff like that or how does this work?
They just go, they can go to our disaster loan outreach center and just apply. It's a very easy process. They just need a cell phone and an ID.
Okay. That's very good. Interesting. Sounds simple.
It is.
A minimum amount of damage that a person or business would have had to incurred or minimum amount of the loan?
There's no minimum. If you're in the disaster areas, you qualify because the Davies County met the threshold to have us in the area.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next up, we have Energy Superintendent John Root.
Counsel. Start with the gas department. Another three services, new services this month, four applications ready to go. And we did spend most of the month changing out some meters. Changed out 52 to the new census meters. And then crew members, they did on inspections of the non-critical valves, we did find a small leak on a plastic valve, which is rare. So we had to dig it up and replace it. And it was in the part of a yard, so we didn't have to disturb any of the road, so that was good. And we did, last week, we set two 110-foot ductile iron poles. IMPA come down with their big digger truck. As you can see in the pictures, quite a wrestling things into the holes. Took all day, but we got them in. That's where the antennas, so we can receive our reads from our gas meters over in the Jasper, Ireland area and out toward Lake Hemrick. Right now, we're having trouble getting the signals back, so once we get antennas mounted on the poles, it should tremendously help. So we got that done. Hole's been laying in the yard for a while. Finally got coordinated with IMPA to send their truck down with a big digger and a big auger. Actually, we went down 13 feet to set them.
Wow.
Three-foot in diameter auger bit. So about all that truck wanted.
That's a steel pole?
Ductile iron.
Does that thing weigh about?
Eight, a little over 8,000 pounds.
You get it stood up high like that, but it's quite, moves a lot.
Yeah. Let's hope nothing breaks. But we did get her set, so she's all ready for antennas to be mounted and we can get them in from the company. Any questions on the gas? Moving on to electric. We set a couple new poles on 7th Street for the duplexes under construction. I think they got two of them pretty well up, just got it all framed up and ready. And we did set two secondary poles behind some houses on Sunset that were rotten. We had to, couldn't get a truck in there, so we had to take an excavator in with the poles. They're like 35-foot poles, so it wasn't too bad. Been broke for a while, we just had to wait till the ground got firm enough to get in there with the mini without tearing the ground up. So that's completed. Then they've been working on South Cherry. Actually, they finished up today. We converted that little section from overhead to underground. We jumped across the street, across the road. There's a lot of big trees right there that usually cause a lot of problems. Usually when the limb comes out, usually knocks the circuit out, takes the wires down, takes a while to get it all back up and going. We did talk to the homeowners, they want to keep the trees, they're on their property, which I can understand, it kind of shades them from the wall field lights. It's kind of a, important trees to them, so we decided to go underground, across the road. But we did get that completed, so it should reduce some outages hopefully in the future. And then the crews continue to change out some electric meters. We're now over 1,000 meters changed out. We have like 3,800 total in our system. So that's been going pretty good. Then I do have quotes for transformers, pad mount transformers for residential. I got permission last meeting to get quotes and I got three quotes. The cheapest quote is $24,750 for 10 transformers.
That per each? That per each?
No, that's total.
Okay.
It's a 25 KVA and 15 KVA residential pad mounts.
Better than 24 prices, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, this looks better.
Now, the Solomon is a re-manufactured transformer. Instead of a brand-new, it's re-manufactured. They pretty well use the same can. They put new windings, new insulation, new oil in it, test everything, puts a three-year warranty.
How's that compared to a new one as far as warranty?
Warranty? New ones are one year.
Well, that's why I ask. Sometimes I deal with this stuff on the oil port, sometimes new doesn't make it any better.
Yeah. A brand-new one from like Armco would be like 40, 4,000 apiece.
Have we bought any from Sun Belt before?
Yeah.
Yeah. You think they last just as well as they did?
Yeah. Basically, it's all new guts in the can where they repaint the can. Pardon?
That's what we bought last time.
Yeah. We bought them before, a long time ago.
And these are small enough and easy enough to get to if it's gonna be, it's not gonna be a problem if something, if one of them will go bad, you can get to it pretty easily.
Yeah. Different pad mounts.
Yeah. It's on the ground, it's?
Residential, light.
Yeah.
You can pick it up with a little mini or a little backhoe, swap it out.
Yeah.
And the lead time's short too, three, four weeks.
Do you need permission? Need a motion to purchase 10 mid-mout transformers from Sun Belt, Solomon? I'll make that motion.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any questions on the electric?
Will those poles come down or will they just be shortened to allow the telephone and cable on that side of Cherry?
We got with the communication companies. They moved the motor tower, new poles.
Don't we able to do that?
PSC did.
Across the street?
Yeah. They run a new line. I think there's one communication company that's gonna let it, let it up across where it is now.
Yeah.
So if a limb comes down, tears it down, it's, everybody's still being electric, but they won't have communication line.
I don't know if those are, I can't remember if those are iron poles or wood poles or you would, you would shorten them up or whatever you had to do.
Real quick, can you give a brief description of what happened to the power outage of the city the other day?
Friday?
Yeah.
That was Center Point.
Thanks.
They had a switching problem. I was called about 3 o'clock from Center Point. I'd see they're from the substation south of Jasper to our substation. You know, the big pole's headed east of town. Them are all wooden, they're gonna replace them with steel poles. Right now, they're working in the bottoms out, turn at Royal King, go out east there. And they're switching by our substation. They got motor-operated air brake here. It wasn't working properly, so they had to manually open the switch. So they opened it too slow, or it drew an arc and finally went phase to phase and knocked the circuit out, knocked the city offline. So time to reset everything, we were out a couple minutes, but it was all Center Point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good information.
Yeah, they're doing quite the, quite the upgrade through the bottoms over there. You can see it on this side too, so.
Yeah. They'll be replacing steel poles all the way to our substation.
Good.
So, but they just had a switching problem. Knocked it out for a couple minutes until they got everything reset, put everything back in.
Good to hear it wasn't us.
Yeah.
It's good to hear one of us did that. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. Water Superintendent Jerry Austin.
Good afternoon. Oh, Jerry. Howdy. We'll jump into distribution here. Service line for OFS Plant 1, I'm sure you guys are probably hearing, tired of hearing about this one. It's been about a three-month project. We've had a lot of, a lot of city utilities out there, but with that, there was a lot of private utilities. Far Best has a lot of fiber out there in the ground, as well as private electric and OFS as well. So kind of drug that project out a whole lot longer than what we wanted, but we did get with trinches innovations. We finally got all the utilities located, they were able to come in, we boarded that new service line in, got that whole new service done for OFS Plant 1 there. And then from there, with the weather, we finally got some ground dried out, so we, we have quite a few right-of-ways throughout town, heading to our South Water Tower from 3rd Street, out County Road 660 and 700 towards Ferdinand, towards our Potoka pit out there that we buy, our wholesale pit. And with all these storms that we've had, we've had a ton of trees go down those right-of-ways. We do our best to keep those right-of-ways clear, just in case we do have issues out there, we're able to get to them and we're not working on cutting up trees before we get there. So we did spend a little over a week cutting trees up out of those right-of-ways and getting them moved and that way we can keep them mowed. That's Rich Tan, our part-time employee, kind of surprising, but he mows 54 acres a week. That's just around the lake there and then all the right-of-ways that we have spread out through town, so. And he mows, he mows every right-of-way weekly, just so we do have good access to all of our infrastructure.
I took it for probably that number and they didn't believe it.
Yeah. It is a lot. We sat there and we figured it out just to, just to see how much it was a few years back and it's, it's definitely a lot more than what a person would think that we have out there, just due to the fact of all the right-of-ways that we do have throughout the city. And so from there, we got the OFS, we went out there and located a few utilities for their new, I don't know if it's a warehouse or a production building there, but at 419th Street, where they're gonna have to have their fire service vault moved. So trying to work with them and finding a good spot to put that fire vault to not interfere with one of their buildings or their parking lot that they're putting in. We did spend some time out there with our hydro excavator, along with the contractor that they've hired to do that work. And then we had, during our spring flushing this year, we did find, we flush Southridge fire hydrants when we do hours, just to keep them on a routine maintenance schedule, make sure they work. We do test those as far as their gallon per minute static residual pressures for the fire department, so they know what to expect when they get out there to be able to pull off those fire hydrants if need be. With that, we, we've always in the past kind of helped them with anything going on out there, so we did a system with, with that replacement there. And then we did find an abandoned meter pit at 7th and Van Buren where the, where Ruger Kirsten's purchased that property and is putting up those duplexes. It's buried underground, thankfully. It didn't, nobody caught it with a piece of equipment, so we were able to remove it without making a mess. And then we, we had to do some work to our boat dock. We went a long time without having a boat dock out there and we had a lot of people requesting a boat dock being put in out there. And we were able to put that in roughly two and a half years ago. Unfortunately, we did catch it on camera, but it was too dark to be able to see faces or license plates. But we had some, some people come out there and do some vandalism to that boat dock and rip the railing off of it and threw it in the lake. So we were finally able to fish that, that railing out and with the help of John's guy there, Ryan Hall with the gas department, he was able to come out and weld that aluminum back together for us and we've got that installed and back in place for our fishermen.
Sad.
Yes, it is.
It's very sad.
It is.
It's nice. My gosh.
Yes, it is. But from there, we, we jumped into a chainsaw safety seminar out at the street department for our employees there. It's great for them, we're constantly using chainsaws, so whether they're new employees that haven't been through it all or old employees that sometimes we fall on bad habits, it's nice to have that kind of training for them to be able to have that little refresher to maybe remember to put those chaps on next time they grab a chainsaw, keep themselves safe.
Yeah.
There we, every year, we, kind of a joint effort with the street department, we go out and pick up straw bales out of the field. So this year, we went out and picked up a couple hundred straw bales and we store those down at the street department. We use those for all of our yard repair. So unfortunately, the only time we do straw is the hottest minutes of the year. So it's, it's always a joy. And then we did do a lot of dirt work and seeding, since we've had a lot of this rain, a lot of our dig areas have settled out, so we're able to get out there and take care of a lot of that. And then with that OFS Plant 1 service line, we did have to cut a section of the parking lot out at OFS Plant 18 to expose the water main there, to hook that service up. So we did, we went out there and worked with the street department to get that put in as well. And then we spent some time at our 1st Street limb lot. We use that location to dump our hydro excavator. The stuff that comes out hydro excavator is very wet. It's, I mean, it's a liquid when it comes out of there. It's not easy to get in and out of Ralph Wagner's with that, where we normally dump our dirt. So we have a secluded area there that we dump it in, we let it dry, and then we go down there and load it up to haul it to Ralph's. And then we also had a water symposium at utility supply company. It was the last one for our physical year for our C, for our licenses. So we did send everybody there to get their last, last few CE's that they needed for the, the year to be able to continue to obtain their license. From there, we go to the filter plant. Filter plant is running as it should, minus our two filters that you guys are aware of. We did, we did have a little change at our filter plant. As you all know, this is first, I've been here since, but Jace Merkel has stepped into the superintendent position at the parks. We wish him well. We're very excited for him because we know his passion for the park. And with that, we have put Aaron Beaker in his place out there at the water filtration plant. He's worked along Jace probably more than anybody that's out there. He is overqualified for the position as far as certifications and credentials. And with me and Jace sitting down, we felt he was the best one for the job. And he's been out there for, going on a month now and he's doing great with it. He's really enjoying it and, and doing great things. So other than that, our meter system, we're still waiting on that last shipment. I did speak to them again, same thing, we're looking at them yet this month, so hopefully by the end of this fall, before it gets super cold, we'll, we'll have our meter program wrapped up with the census meter system. Anybody have any questions with any of that?
Of the accuracy of that meter, is this still good?
The, as far as the accuracy goes, yep. So those meters, we do go out, we have a, we have a certified meter for our smaller diameter meters. It's set up in a portable box. We go out and pick random meters, we can hook that meter up to the homeowner's outside water spigot. We run water through the water spigot and we can compare numbers to make sure we're staying within our, well, to make sure they are 100% accurate.
Paying for what they're using.
Yes, very much so. With our large diameter meters, we do have a company come in. We use Grip Industries, they come out and certify our meters as well at the water filtration plant. We have to have ours done yearly for IDIM purposes. But any of our large diameter meters at our industries that are extremely large water user, users, we do have them also certify their meters as well to make sure that we are not missing any potential revenue there from water loss.
Yeah.
Other than that, I did include a packet here from Commonwealth. I didn't, we went over this, it's the same scope of plan that John Wetzel was here and explained to you guys a few months back. We finally have it all put together with the advertisement for bids. There is a correction on here. He did have on there a projected bid opening on Tuesday, August 26th at 5:30 PM. We don't want to do that on a night of a meeting, we don't want to drag that out for you guys any longer than we have to. And I believe there's a stipulation with that of being able to approve, with us being able to approve that if we would open those at that meeting. So with that, I'm just bringing you this packet to approve the plans and spec sheet and give us permission to go ahead and advertise this for contract for bid. We, there are a few things on here with this. We would have to put it out to the Herald twice before the, before the bid date. We do, there's multiple places here with Commonwealth Engineering that contractors are able to pick up bid documents. And then we would also be having a pretty big conference Thursday, August 7th at 10:00 AM at the water treatment plant. That way, the contractor's able to actually come out there and physically see what they're up against. It's, as far as doing the work, it's, for a lot of these companies that will bid this, it's normal, normal everyday stuff for them. Unfortunately, with our plant staying in service, it's, it really puts a strain on the way they're gonna be able to move this stuff in and out of the plant due to the fact of the dust control and everything else that's gonna have to be going on while we keep the plant in service. So as I said, other than that, that date change there, and I'm not sure if, are we able to do that Tuesday, the 26th at 10:00 AM and still be able to accept that bid that evening?
So you appoint a bid committee?
Yeah. We have to have a big committee, but also Commonwealth will have to review the bids for completeness.
Right.
So really, the question goes back, could we have the conversation with Commonwealth? Are they good with the 10:00 AM?
And, yeah.
Seven hours.
And I did.
Be able to review the bids.
I did speak with John about that today and he did say that was fine. He did say we could also move it back to Monday, but he said Mondays are Mondays. And he would, he would like to keep it, if we could do it 10:00 AM on Tuesday, that would give them plenty of time to be able to, to do what they need to do with the bids to bring them to the council meeting for approval that evening.
Normally, we have Tom, the mayor, the superintendent as the big committee. We'll make that motion.
Make that motion.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. You good with that date and time, Tom?
And then I'll get you an updated-
We approved it.
Yeah. I'll get you an updated advertisement for the Herald and stuff with that time change of 10:00 AM. John told me he'd have me that in the morning. He was just out of the office for the rest of the day today.
And then you need also to approve the project specifications and authorize bidding, advertising, bid advert.
I'll make a motion to approve the specification and allow advertisement for bids.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Other than that, that's all I have.
Made it pretty simple on his list there. Not bad. Rehabilitation, I like, like charts like that.
He does, he does very well.
No attorney talk in there.
Yeah. That's exactly right.
They get paid more than they're worth.
Appreciate it.
Do you think that might be bidding on this?
It's truly hard to tell. It's, it's really hit and miss with all the, there's a lot of infrastructure work going on with wastewater facilities and water facilities in the area. You guys kind of seen that with the wastewater project. You know, there's, and it's, it's a very small scope of companies that do do this work. What that Commonwealth does, they do use a portal that they do upload this to that automatically pushes this out to contractors that they're aware of that do do this line of work. So it will be pushed, pushed out to multiple contractors as well as being able to see it in the Herald. So I'm hoping it's a, it's a very competitive process and-
I doubt these contractors should allow on that, on any newspaper to get their work.
Right, nope, yep.
I mean, that's-
That's for sure.
I don't, I mean, but I do think, I do think that the engineering companies have lots of, they spend a lot of time contracting-
Ton of resources.
Contracting and having discussions with these people so they can, these other, so they can, they want to, they want to get these things bid, you know? They want to get lots of bids, so.
Yep.
Good for that.
All right.
Glad to get that behind us.
Yeah, me too. I'm, yeah, more than ready. We're, we're still on schedule and with this continues to keep us on schedule. So that's, that's a big thing for us, is to be able to have this construction going on during the late fall, winter into spring and be done by our high-demand days when the summer rolls around. So it's very important for us to continue to stay on, on timeline and get this project wrapped up. So I appreciate you guys' cooperation and approval.
It's been several months you've been working on it, so we appreciate your efforts on that too. You didn't, you didn't know when you took this job, you're gonna be construction, construction superintendent.
There's a lot, a lot of things I didn't know.
Congratulations.
That's right. That's exactly right. Yep. All righty, well, thank you guys.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry.
Anything from City Attorney Phil Snyder? No, although once we receive the bids, then we'll, you'll have to come back and find lies and financing on it. I think, like you're part of the finance department. No, although, once we receive the bids, then we'll, you'll have to come back and finalize the financing on it, I think, like a department, they'll finance our budgets. That'd be, we'll revisit that when we get the bids.
That I was gonna ask too.
Here we go.
And that's all I have.
Thank you to the electric department, so. Uh, anything from first treasure, Tom, double?
Uh, only
You need to be thinking about when you want, in August, when you want to talk about the budget. With budgets. Did we do it all on one day last year?
We did, and I'd, I'd like to discuss maybe some of the scheduling, I think we can maybe organize a little better than what we'd had last year. Allow the three departments, we got a lot of questions, more time, and if they don't use their time, then Tom can fill in, because he's got a lot of fill-in knowledge.
Yeah, I mean, some of them are very straightforward, and others, there's a lot of
Yeah.
There's a lot of discussions.
We backed up the time slots a lot, because we didn't allow enough time. So I think, my opinion, let, let out the park and the police and street at least an hour.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, we may skip those out, because if I remember right, we finished first half big pretty quickly. Did, actually went somewhere for lunch and ran it a little over in the afternoon, so we need to look at that, do the split up some of those. My first ones, I didn't know.
All right, any, uh, any other items, council items, citizen items?
Uh, I saw we had a large claim, and I know it's probably, based on the progression of the senior citizen, we made a large payment. I assume we're progressing pretty well.
Yeah, and those were two months, I believe that was claimed six and s, five and six, I believe.
Five and six.
So they were two, they were together, uh, May and June, should be getting July, so, but they're, right now, uh, they were originally scheduled, uh, by contract to be completed by the end of November, they're projecting right now, we had an update last Thursday, that it could be the first week, uh, of October, early October, so. They did start a month early, and they're running ahead, but we do have decking material, I think we're waiting on everything else. We have to pick out the, anyway, there's a, there's a lead time on the decking material, but other than that, uh, everything else seems, everything's there, the windows are there, and they're in the building, the doors are in the building, siding is arrived, flooring's available. Right now, they have to replace exterior siding on that, and when they, and once they get that done, then they'll roll with the drywall. They're waiting till they get the siding replaced, just in case there's some stud damage on the exterior walls before they put everything up, so. They'll do that, they'll run electrical, uh, drains are already open, and then drywall.
Good.
It's running, running ahead of schedule, good.
Nothing else, I'll make motion adjourn.
I'll second. We had a first and a second on the German, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, Jerry, six oh two.